I'll open the meeting of the zoning board of appeals of May 12th. This is the 12th, is it not? Um, we are participating in our meeting via Zoom webinar. Those in attendance may have their image, voice, or telephone number recorded. Okay, if um, I'm still gonna call you Douglas if I may.
It's all good.
And I'll open the continuation of the hearing and then I have an explanation for you. First, I'll ask, do you have anything for us tonight?
Yes, I do.
Is it what we asked for last night?
Uh, not really, because the engineer requests more time.
Okay.
I need to talk to him.
All right, let me just tell you what the issue is. Uh, I mistakenly continued your hearing till tonight. We can't continue it till tonight because there has to be 48 hours between them because they have to be posted.
Okay.
For 48 hours, so um, I'll open the hearing. I did, did I open the hearing already?
Yes, yes.
And what I'll say to you is, we shouldn't take any testimony or anything tonight or discuss anything. Um, how would you like to be on our agenda for our June meeting?
Um, well, I mean, I can get on the agenda for June meeting, if it's okay for to participate in the meeting, just like extend that to the June meeting. But um, my engineer just told me like, you know, that he can try to work something out and get prices and everything, but he just said like, 24 hours is too short of time.
Yeah.
But he did explain something to me about the plans that I, if I can, if I can, I will mention to everyone.
Um, I'd rather not accept any testimony, um, because technically this is not a legitimate hearing because we didn't post it 48 hours in advance. So I'll ask if you're willing to, um, at your request, have the hearing continued until June 8th.
Yes.
Is that fine with you? Is that your request?
Yes, please.
What time? Um, we have 7 o'clock for the um, sign at the school, right, Leanne?
Correct.
We don't have anything else, do we?
We do not.
Okay, would 7:30 work for you?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion. I mean, we're going through the gyrations, but everyone understands why. Um, I'll entertain a motion to continue the hearing until June 8th uh, at 7:30 PM at the request of the petitioner.
We'll move.
Is there a second, please?
One second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. I'll take a roll call vote. Susanna?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Jenny?
Aye.
Ginny?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Now, I'll tell Douglas, if you have anything, or if your engineer has told you things that you'd like to um, let us know about, you can um, send them via email to the ZBA and they'll be forwarded to the members.
Okay, so I did send today some um, some info, um, two pieces of information plus a letter from the contractor, so that's all I got for now.
All right, so hopefully on June 8th, you'll be able to um, give us some information from the engineer about what it would take, right?
Yeah, I mean, I could give it now, but uh, I would say yes.
Okay, let's do it, June 8th, when we can get it from the engineer.
Yeah, okay.
All right, we've um, motion seconded and we voted to um, do the hearing until 7:30 on June 8th. I'll declare uh, the hearing continued. Okay, we're just in regular open session. Is there anything anybody would like to share with us in open session?
I have a question about uh, votes. Is there any difference um, if we're setting a precedent, is there any difference between having a unanimous vote and having a a non-unanimous vote?
Not generally. The problem arises when there's only four of us, okay? We should have five people voting, minimum. And the reason is that some types of things, I believe a variance is one of them, requires four out of five. If we only have four people, which is a quorum, and they can vote, and one votes in the negative and three vote in the positive, it would go against the petitioner and it would be at a um, a churn down. Does that make sense to you?
Yes.
Okay.
So, because my concern was um, say we vote on something and it's a unanimous vote, and then someone comes along and uses that hearing as a basis for asking for a similar uh, variance. Say, for example, somebody shows up and they want a four-car garage that sticks into the side yard setback by the same amount, and they, does it make a difference if we had a unanimous vote to approve it? Or a non-unanimous vote to approve the two-car garage?
No, I think we have to have four positive votes.
Okay, so as long as it's
If we, there's no, no precedent. My understanding from CPTC, um, from the classes there, a special permit in particular, okay? Um, you know, there's no problem with it because it's a privilege, it's sort of like your license, they don't have to give it to you. With a variance, it's a recordable instrument. And as long as you can justify why you do or you don't vote the way you do, precedent really doesn't enter into it because every case is different.
Okay.
Like with one of the ones we're dealing with now, there's wetlands, there's, you know, those types of things. Someone else might not have wetlands, but they may have a leach, existing leach field that's right where you'd like to see them put whatever it is they're putting. So each one's different.
Okay.
But you still, for a variance, you still have to meet the criteria in Foddy A, section 10.
All right, well, that answers my question, so thank you.
Okay. Ginny, have you, and um, Matt, apply, yeah.
The other one.
The other one, yeah, friggin' crack.
Uh, frickin' crack. It's Thelma and Louise.
Yeah, Thelma and Louise, that's a good thing, yes, Thelma and Louise.
That's what our club calls us, Thelma and Louise.
Have you put up a petition in yet with um, for the, doing the database?
I have not, but I, I may, um, I'm just find, trying to find time to do it. Maybe tomorrow I'll fit it in, but.
Okay, the only thing I'd say is there's a limit each year.
Yes.
And you can do so much this year up until June 30th. And then it starts over.
Yep, the fiscal year cuts off, correct, yes.
So just
Yeah, it'll be beneficial to try to get some in this fiscal year.
Yes.
Right, thank you.
And then that's, that's applied to November, to the taxes in November.
It's very helpful. I've done it before, and with our taxes, I find it helpful.
Yes, now that the government won't let you deduct them.
Yeah, yikes.
So what have you been doing, Jenny? You've been very silent the last couple of meetings.
I have. Doing stuff around the house and getting ready for summer.
Ah, have you been up country?
Uh, no, I just came back from South Padre Island, Texas.
Really? What are you doing there?
Vacation.
Ah, do you know anybody down there? Did you go to visit someone, or?
We, a friend of ours from the lake, his wife is from Brownsville. So the six of us went down and then met up with his or her sisters and mother, and then the Jim's mother and sister and brother-in-law showed up, and the house slept 20, so we had plenty of room.
Wow.
So Denny, you're retired, right?
Yes.
So how do you know when you're on vacation?
Well, I was working a couple days a week, two to three days a week, so that
I would, I would see you over there, yeah.
Yeah.
And you work snowstorms too.
Yeah.
You, Susanna, when you own property, there's no such thing when you're home as a vacation. There is a big difference. We're retired, and I think we've worked harder around the house now than ever with the property. Yeah, vacation means you, you leave it. I'm looking forward to one.
And going to the other house to work at the other house.
Yeah, exactly, right, right. That's the difference.
I still remember when Phil put up that stone wall and several people thought he was cuckoo, but boy, it looks nice, Jimmy.
Thank you, yes. We still get compliments on it, and I wish people would stop hitting it.
Oh, really?
Yep, it got hit again um, last year, and uh, actually, this particular, the last accident, she also hit a telephone pole and broke the pole.
Oh.
And then went into the wall, but she, she's okay, and she was in a small car. I think she's a very lucky lady. Um, another time, the wall was hit, the car flipped over into the pasture and was on its roof. And I believe there was another. Um, we had a nephew that, that hit it once with a ATV, and he
Um, Ginny froze.
Yeah. I was gonna say, I built the stone wall in front of our farm stand and uh, I, no sooner did I do that, and someone hit the wall, but it kept them from driving through our barn.
I must, I must say, when I first lived in town, we had an accident in front of our house oh, two or three times a year. But for the longest ti- I would say it's been 20 years we haven't had an accident. The house next door, I mean, when Simpugas lived next door, someone came across and went across and right into their house.
Oh, oh my God.
Is that the blue house?
It, no, it's been taken down now, Ginny.
Oh, oh, yes, yes. I know, I, I recall the house, same side of the road as you are.
Yes.
Okay.
And one time, I remember a guy came and he had hit the mailbox across the street and then ended up upside down on our lawn and crawled out of his back window, which was broken. And he's going, how's the dog? And I said, there's, there's no dog. He said, I hit a dog. I said, no, you were airborne and that's a mailbox you hit. He was like three sheets to the wind, which is probably why he survived.
Yeah.
I was, I was one of the accidents in front of your house.
Really?
Yeah, um, we were on the motorcycle back when I was married, and we um, hit one of those, those uh, tar snakes where they fill the cracks in, and the back wheel went out, and so we slid for about 50, 60 feet. And actually, that's how I met Denny.
Really?
Yeah, in the ambulance.
Oh my goodness.
I always have Chip Durant in the ambulance with me. Well, no Chip. He's my regular. He picks me up everywhere.
What's happening?
I don't mean for it to sound like that. I've had two riding accidents.
Um, what happened to the Durant property up on um?
Dennis Fairbey bought it.
Oh.
Yeah, Chip offered to buy my property on Randall Road, but he couldn't do it until he sold his place. I couldn't wait that long.
Yeah, when you bail, you bail.
It still took me a year and a half to be able to do it. And I am
I'm surprised. That was a nice property.
No, it's because it's, um, I'm still in court with it, actually.
Oh, no.
Yeah. Nothing I can talk about on Zoom.
Is it a marital situation thing, or is it a property thing?
No, it was the whole banking crisis thing.
Oh.
Foreclosures and, and uh, when they were not, um, there wasn't a close eye on everything.
I remember back when they'd give you 125% of the purchase price of the property. And a lot of people took advantage of that and they ended up in the dumpster. You know, because it was just stretching it too far.
And then, of course, the, you know, the whole bubble popped and everyone was upside down.
Mm-hmm. That was around, what, 84?
Something like that.
Well, that was the first time. The second time was around 2008.
Oh, that's right, you're correct, yeah.
Having a wall front, somebody's here to buy my motorcycle.
Oh.
Yeah, I saw you had a great big sign on that this morning.
Say it again?
I saw you had a great big
You saw the sign on it this morning.
Yeah. Somebody just stopped wanting to give me a down payment.
Did you take it?
No, because I couldn't answer his questions. He wanted to know how much it costs for insurance and how much for uh, the registered.
Oh, Danny, he's only a tire kicker at that point, then.
Yeah, another guy that was looking for it today, too.
Well, the weather certainly is tempting, helping.
Yeah.
Yeah, I might come by tomorrow and take a test drive.
You got a license, go right ahead, it's all ready to go.
I think I still have my license.
I got nervous about motorcycles. Um, I worked at Marlboro Hospital alternate, alternate weekends on the 11 to 7 shift and um, in the emergency room. And I want to tell you, sometimes they'd bring in a uh, uh, an ambulance and they'd bring the person's leg in, and then they'd second the ambulance. Um,
They'll find it.
Well, this is it. One of them was in a tree. And I remember one accident, you know where the courthouse is in Marlboro?
Yeah.
On Route 20, they went around that turn. And of course, there's a lot of sand and stuff there from the winter. This was in the spring. And they just lost it, and I mean, they were experienced drivers. Okay, we're getting close. Leanne doesn't know, she's muted.
Sorry, six more minutes.
All right, so we don't, we're not gonna have Rich attending tonight?
Right now, he's attending by phone, and he, once he gets home, he'll attend by computer.
Okay, do we know, there's two phone numbers listed here. Do we know which one he is?
The one up top, the 4, 4500.
Okay. I wish we could rename them.
I can rename, actually, I can.
Oh, yeah, I can too, okay.
Um, I'll rename Rich now.
Okay.
Okay, where'd you go?
I have some extra roosters if anybody needs any.
How do you get extra roosters? Is the wrong eggs hatch?
Yeah. Hey, if I can figure out how to only hatch female chickens, I would be
You'd be rich.
I'd be retired. And probably still raising chickens.
Yeah, ticked a rodent in force right now.
Yes.
Just walked out to the front yard and come back and I had my claw on my leg.
Yeah, and you can't, I can't let the chickens free range because we've got the um, highly pathogenic avian influenza. And if, if any of the chickens get it from waterfowl, they come and take your entire flock, and you can't have more chickens for, I think, three, three months?
Wow. Farming isn't easy, huh?
It's one big to-do list.
I see the folks at the Common Garden down there by Solomon Plan Wall. I see that's kicking into high gear right now.
Three more minutes.
We need the Jeopardy music.
We just, we just lost Ginny.
Again?
Yeah.
I'm gonna go get some ice. I'll be back.
You have two minutes. Okay.
So how much time do you spend up country, Jenny? Do you go up there just weekends, or do you?
I'll start spending more. My granddaughter graduates from Riviera Sunday. So instead of going up there and then come down and at college, all the way back so I can leave the dog at the house. I'll start going up like Wednesday next week and stay for a week or so.
Yeah, I got a granddaughter graduating this year too, um, but it's high school. Um, Algonquin, and it may interfere with Assabet. Assabet is supposed to be on a Saturday, and Algonquin is on a Sunday. But Algonquin's already told them that if it's gonna rain on Sunday, they'll have it on Saturday.
Somebody was saying they have in, some schools graduating at the DC, uh, BCU.
DC, yeah.
And they're charging $5 a ticket, and they're only giving out like four tickets.
The Assabet?
No, of course, I can't tell you what name of the school it was, but they were charging $5 a ticket.
Well, we started going to um, the DCU Center.
Yeah.
And it was for two reasons. Number one, because of weather, okay? And number two was, I complained, or it must be eight or 10 years ago, when I was going over the bills that we were spending $5,000 to rent chairs for the field.
Yeah.
Well, it's cheaper to rent the DCU Center than it was to have them um, rent the chairs and set them up and do that stuff. I said, well, we could buy chairs, you know, you could buy a lot of folding. I mean, these were just like uh, card table chairs.
Yeah.
And you can buy a lot of them for $5,000. But they said, well, we don't have the place to store them. You know, you need
7:30.
Okay, good. Okay, we're recording, are we?
We are.
Uh, okay, this, we're resuming our regular meeting and rather than our chatter. And next on the agenda, um, is 270, no. Uh, this is 10 Bigelow, is it not?
It is.
10 Bigelow uh, Street, and this is for a variant, parking variance. Do we have the petitioner here?
We do. Would you like me to promote them to panelist?
Please. You have all the paperwork and it's all up to par, right, Leanne?
Yes, I verified everything. Butters were notified and ads were in the paper by the due dates.
Okay. Is there more than one to be?
That I do not know. We'll have to ask.
Ms. John Monte?
Yes, can you hear me?
Um, you're very faint, not very loud, but um, I can hear you.
Okay, let me see if I can adjust that. Is that any better?
That's much better.
Okay.
Are you speaking to this petition for the petitioner?
Yes, I am, and there are, um, there should be a couple other people. There's a Attorney Yates. Uh, his phone is running by phone, so his number is uh, 508-532-3524.
I'm sorry, what was that? I just heard uh, Attorney Yates.
Uh, it's the phone number ending in 3524.
The phone number, yeah. Okay. Okay.
I see a par in the, down here. Who's par is that?
We seem to be losing people here.
All right, don't know what happened there.
I noticed that uh, the connection is unstable, and I've had to uh, sign back on twice. Anyone else? Uh, maybe it's happening to Suzanne right now.
Yeah, I'm
Yeah. Lost my attention briefly.
Hmm.
Is Lynn, Lynn here?
I'm right here.
Okay, so Attorney Yates is declining to be promoted to panelist.
Okay.
And the phone number, I can allow them to speak if and when you'd like me to do that.
Um, yes, I'm sure why, but I will, I'm texting him now.
Is there anyone else that we need to promote in the meantime?
I believe Kathy Adams is on as well.
She is, yeah, that's right.
Okay.
I think I'm back.
Who are?
Welcome Kathy.
Can, can we try on Attorney Yates one more time? He said he tried to accept, but what happened?
Okay.
If not, we'll just start.
Yeah, for some reason, it's not letting me promote him.
Okay.
I'll keep trying.
Okay.
I could, I mean.
Up there, here he comes.
Kathy, oh, he's in, okay.
And Jerry Skiles has his hand raised. Is he with you, James?
I don't know. It's not part of our group.
Okay.
All right, why, why don't we hold off on Mr. Giles until we've given the petitioner a chance to explain what they're looking for here?
Sure. Okay, I can get started. Again, my name is Jim Almonte. I'm a registered landscape architect and principal with Land Design Collaborative located in Westboro, MS. I can do the presentation. If you allow me to share my screen, I can share some plans with you. That's okay.
I would have a question of you before you begin, just in fairness. There are three things you're going to need ultimately to culminate in what you would like it to culminate in. And you've only applied for a variance for parking and I would perhaps like Attorney Yates to address the fact that I have a problem granting parking spaces in front of a building that doesn't exist and we don't even have an approved site plan on which to put it.
And can you unmute Chris so he can get in the meeting?
Susannah, can you do that, the phone number?
Uh, I'm.
His picture's up here.
Yeah, it, all I have is asked to unmute.
There you go.
Attorney Yates, did you hear my question? Mr. Yates?
Okay, they're saying, I think you just did, but so. Yeah.
Trying to speak. Why don't I call him on my cellphone and he can talk through my phone?
Well, there's numbers he can call into also.
No, he did all that, but I guess some reason it's not working.
Okay.
All right, let me call him.
Do you understand what I'm suggesting, Mr. Almonte?
Yes, I do. And I, I'll let Attorney Yates address it, but just our strategy here was that we know we need to come in front of the board for special permit and site plan review.
Can, they, they did unmute you.
And as part of that process, we know that we need to do full engineering plans, full stormwater design.
Okay.
And and we didn't want to go through that process without having the variance in place first. So that, that was our strategy in applying for the variances first. We did speak with the building commissioner about the process. We did share with him the conceptual site plans that we had prepared. And he basically did a zoning determination for us and instructed us to apply for the two variances that we're applying for tonight.
Well, I understood it to be one variance, but do you understand the board's problem in trying to authorize spaces in the front of a building that doesn't exist?
And can they, can you try to unmute Chris's phone number? His, his phone number is not unmuted.
Yeah, that's it.
There you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right, so I want to get rid of, get rid of that one.
Mr. Yates?
Yeah.
Did you hear my question?
Yeah, so the reason that we're here before you for the variances are for the location on the lot and the setbacks with the parking and we believe that you can approve the variances based upon the location of the plans that we have that we will need to go back and get through, get approved through site plan review because as James had said earlier, it didn't make sense to do all the engineering for the lot if the variances weren't going to be approved. So that's why we're here first.
Well, that's, that's, that's part of my problem. You're showing us a plan that has a building on it that has not received site plan approval as yet. I know you, you've been to conservation. There's also Board of Health. It's likely, well, I don't know if it's likely, but it's at least possible that the configuration may change between now and in the future when the building is finally approved on the site plan. And I'm, don't know how the board can approve parking spaces in front of a building that not only doesn't exist, but there isn't approval for as yet. I think the two go hand in hand.
So you're suggesting that we go through site plan review prior to coming back to you?
Well, you'd go through us. I would suggest that you, and it's up to you. I, I don't know how we could possibly approve spaces that we are not confident where they're going to end up. We have your conceptual, but that's what it is, is conceptual. And it's possible it could change. And we, you know, a Butters, you're rebutting Hudson. I don't know. I believe you've been and spoken to them and they don't have a problem, but we don't know who may come up with an issue. I think. I'm sorry, go ahead.
As far as a Butters, so we abut, and Kathy, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but we abut the town of Berlin open space and the building has been conceptually laid out in the location that it's been laid out for two reasons. You know, the shape and topography of the lot coming in through the long narrow roads through Bigelow Road and Hudson and also the wetlands that bisected, but there's another reason, and that is because we abut the town of Berlin open space and we're trying to maximize the open space to connect to the town of Berlin on the plan as an abutter. And the only abutter in Hudson is the Ant Whistle Corporation and that building is owned by the same family, the Kane family. The Kane Industrial Trust, they're the only abutter. And Kathy, you can correct me if I'm incorrect in that statement.
Well, a town of Hudson also isn't a butter of open space. So it's Kane Industrial, Town of Hudson and Town of Berlin are the only abutters.
Yep.
Mr. Yates, do you understand my problem?
I do.
And what do you think the remedy to my problem is?
Well, I mean, we're gonna do what you feel we should do. We can go through the site plan review process to site the building and then come back for variances if that's the order you wish us to go in.
Or you can do them all at the same time.
Jim, do you want to discuss any conversations you had with the town of Berlin that relate to the order we're going in? Sure. Yes, I, I did mention, I think you were probably joining the call while I was talking, but we, we did share the conceptual plan that is in front of you tonight with the building commissioner. He basically did a zoning determination for us and told us, you know, what variances would be required. We explained to him at that point too that, you know, it made sense to go for the variances first without going through, doing fully engineered design plans for the entire property without knowing, you know, whether or not we would get the variance. So we typically, when we go through this process, start with the variances first. You know, we're, we're showing buildings on a plan. Granted, they're not, they're not constructed. But, you know, we have to start somewhere essentially and it, for us, it made sense to, to start with this process first. This is the first hurdle for us to cross. If we don't get this hurdle, then, you know, it, it doesn't make sense to start with, with fully engineered plans, so. And then this, this board would be the ones reviewing, you know, the, the site plans and the special permit.
I under, I understand what you're saying. My understanding is tonight that basically what we're dealing with is parking.
Right.
Is that correct?
Right, so there, yes, there's two variances that we're requesting. One of them is for location of parking between the front line of the building and the street line. And the other one, there was a question as to whether or not a variance was even required because there was some ambiguity in, in a couple of sections of the bylaw. So the second one that we're requesting a variance for is parking within the setbacks. So those are the two variances that we're requesting. We're hoping to get relief from both of them. I'm not sure how, how we move forward with the process either.
What, what, what I'm saying is, as the person that would end up writing the decision pro or con, we need to be definite about where these parking spaces are going to be. And we're dealing with a concept as far as the building and the lot goes, and I have a great deal of difficulty with that. I mean, how do I say, yes, you can, or how does the board say? I'm just thinking in terms of a decision, yes, you can have six parking spaces in front of the building, but I'm not sure exactly where they'll be.
Right, so if we, if we move forward with this process, starting with the variances first, could we, if we got to the point where we were in agreement and basically the approval would be for what's shown on the concept plan at this point? I mean, it's, it's probably a little bit further along than concept. So if we could get, get the approval to allow for parking in front of the building where it's currently shown and within the setbacks where they're currently shown and get that approval so we can move forward with fully engineered design plans. If something changes through that process, is there a mechanism to come back and amend the variances at that point?
My problem is right up front, how do you give a variance for a building that doesn't exist and hasn't been approved?
See, I, I've never had that question asked before because we always start with something that's in the design process.
Let me turn to my colleagues and ask if, if anyone has a different take on this than I do.
I'm with you, Lynn. It's like putting an apple before the cart, a horse before the cart, it's they can change it again and then they gotta come back to us again. And after they spend all this money and, well, if you'd have come before with the right plan, we could talk about it. I haven't seen any plan yet about this.
Our decisions get recorded at the Registry of Deeds, correct?
The variance would be a recordable document.
So it, I, I agree that it doesn't make sense to make something that is going to be recorded that is not final.
Anyone else have a thought? Jim, you're usually vocal on these things.
No, I'm kind of torn both ways on this one. I mean, I, I prefer to do it as part of the site plan review because it just seems to me to make sense to have some at least solid plans, even though there still won't be a building in place at the time. But it would make sense to me to have solid plans versus offering a variance with no idea where the building's gonna be at all. I mean, they have a rough proposal, obviously, but that could change in numerous, numerous ways through the site plan approval process. So it seems a little weird to me to not do those together.
Yeah, yeah, in the past, when I've done them, it's, the footprint is, is on the site plan. What's inside the, the building footprint may change, but you have to know where you're, where your building outline is.
Jenny, did you have your hand up?
Yes, I did. And I do not see how we can proceed without a site plan. We have no starting point to determine where the variance would even be required or we have nothing. We don't have a start. And I feel strongly that we need to have the site plan before a variance.
I can understand that maybe in the past, there've been some variances that you may have had approved in advance. But this is somewhat unique. This is for parking, in particular for parking in front of a building. And I think we have to have at least a site plan with a building in order to determine how many and where parking spaces can go.
Could we, how, Jim, how long would it take to get a site plan to a point where we could bring it concurrently with the variance applications? And this question is to the board, could we, through the chair, could we leave this hearing open and bring in the site plan or do we need to re-advertise and re-apply with the site plan attached to the, as part of it?
If you were gonna bring the site plan forward and I, might I suggest I would do all three things together? Your special permit, your site plan and your variances, parking variances. And my suggestion would be we could continue this hearing until next month. And in the meantime, we could post and advertise and add to that for the site plan and the special permit. And we could have all three of them together next month.
Jim, is that timeframe achievable? Yes. So the meeting would be next month. How, how long in advance do you need the material?
At least a week.
At least a week. Yeah.
July's open too, if you want.
Yeah, I mean, if, if, our goal would be to get it for the June hearing and if we could keep this hearing open and then, you know, supplement with the site plan and the special permit, that would be, I think that would make the most sense, at least from my standpoint. Um, and and if for some reason we we can't meet that deadline, then we'll request a continuance to to July.
Okay, so is it your wish to ask for a continuance of this hearing until our uh June 8th meeting?
Yes.
How how does the board feel? I would also tell you that we will ask someone in authority to come and sign a con- a continuance. We have so many days to give you an answer. So we have a form for extensions when it's at your request, just so that we have.
I can meet Leanne whenever it's convenient. I can just run up to the town hall.
Thank you, Kathy. You know her days, right? She's Monday and Wednesday from eight to like one.
So just come next week.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Leanne.
Um, I do have one question, so I appreciate the fact that you're, if the board um votes to the continuance. Uh, do we need to add as part of the motion that we'll be coming in with the site plan review and special permit as well?
I don't think so, because those will be, as far as I'm concerned, they and Attorney Yates can chide in if he wishes, but those will be two new applications.
That's correct.
And all we'll do is set aside the time to deal with them in June, and I have a feeling it'll also be July.
Lynn?
Yes.
Building Commissioner Richard Hanks has his hand up.
Would you promote him, please?
I did, I did.
Go ahead, Rich.
So I I just um, I I, Mr. Almonte did speak with me, we did over this, and um, I understand his point is that he's kind of in a design pragmia right now, where if the board isn't we some of of some form of variance for parking in the front, then he's going back to drawing board and trying to find another way to fit this thing on his lot. So I thought it would be prudent that he discuss it with the board first, whether or not um a variance could be granted, it'll be considered, whether it be conditional and obviously if the footprint of the building changed, that he'd have to amend his plan. So that's, that is my take on it. Um, some places do, as he did say, would issue a variance, conditional variance first, or at least get the discussion going as to what would the pros and cons be of granting some kind of relief, whether or not you vote to accept it now, or not necessarily give a definitive vote, but wh- what is the flavor, whether or not he'd even have a chance of achieving what he's trying to do.
Thank you, Rich.
You're welcome.
I I have a very basic question. This is not the Bigelow Road that is up in Green Acres. This is a Bigelow Road somewhere else in town?
It's down by 495 off of River Road.
This is Bigelow Road in Hudson. Um, the only access to this property is through Hudson, so it's River Road in Hudson to Bigelow Road in Hudson, and it's a cul-de-sac that beats into Berlin. So the, it's a very remote part of Berlin, right on the Hudson line near 495. And the um access and um it, everything is through Hudson. Um, all approvals in Hudson have already been uh obtained um as far as dealing with the Hudson side of this property, but the building is completely in Berlin.
Okay, because it was, it was only showing, the only Bigelow Road was showing was in a uh 40B development, and so I was thinking you were somewhere else.
Yeah, so the tech, the the legal address is 10 Bigelow Road, Hudson, Mass, but the entire structure is in the town of Berlin.
Okay, so it's actually using. All right, it's Bigelow Street. I've got it now, okay.
Yeah, they have it as both.
I'm I'm concerned if one of my colleagues can help me here for us to comment on whether or not we're inclined to approve this. Um, it's sort of prejudgmental to the hearing. But in all fairness, I think we would give it very serious consideration. Can we put it that way? But we just need to be definitive. This is what we're looking for, is being definitive.
We understand what you're saying, yes.
Yes, and I understand the the reason for the bylaws to protect uh areas of town that require it, but given that this is so remote, um, we're, and we're constricted by topography and wetland issues, that that's really why we were coming to you first to.
And it's a large parcel of land and it's remote, and we know all of those things. I mean, we can't ahead of time tell you, yes.
Correct, we understand.
The problem we have is that we need to be definitive in our decision as to where the parking is. And I think um in order to do that, at a minimum, we have site plan. Now, you've already dealt with the selectmen, correct? Have you reached agreement with the selectmen, okay? So um, I think you're, you know, well on your way. But I don't think without site plan and the special permit request that we can define where it's gonna be, because then you know, Board of Health gets involved as to where the well's gonna be, where the septic's gonna be. Um, and then we have a good reason to say this is why the parking has to be where it is. Anyone on the board have anything else?
My question to them would be, would Hudson be supplying you with water and service or nothing?
Hudson is not supplying us with anything.
Okay.
They they put, they put in a public water source a year or two ago, didn't you?
Yes.
Yeah.
There's already a public water supply well on the property to service this facility.
All right, let me ask whoever is speaking, just so that we can not hold you up tonight, but.
I have, I have a question, Lynn.
Yes, Jenny.
Is there an existing well there now? And is there a septic system?
There's an, there's an existing well. Uh, there's, there's not an existing septic system, but we have a a space designated for one.
But not approved by the Board of Health, right, Rich?
That I'm not sure.
Uh, no, it's it's, it has not been.
Well, again, I think that would uh apply to, again, the site plan to have an existing well and a septic system.
Anyone else have another question or a thought that they'd like to share with the petitioner? If not, again, I'll ask, and I guess I'll ask Mr. Yates, because he's counsel. Um, is it your wish for us to continue this hearing um until our um June 8th meeting? And we have somebody for seven o'clock, do we not, Leanne?
We have someone for seven o'clock and someone for 7:30.
And the 7:30 is home?
Um, is the one we just continued earlier, 272 West Street.
Okay. Um, could I, would you like to have it continued May 8th until eight o'clock?
June 8th.
Yeah.
Uh, June 8th, I'm sorry. Uh, eight o'clock. Um, so that you may also file um your other paperwork. I'm gonna ask, and you you said um, Ms. Adams, that you would come down and you would sign the extension for us, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Got ready on Wednesday.
And you're gonna have to, you know, send out notices again and put stuff in the paper again for the other two items. You don't have to for this one, but you will have to for the special permit and site plan. And if you do it together, I'm sorry?
We understand that, yep. The notices.
Okay, and if you get your petition in quickly, because I'm slow, um, we, I can get you um, a, let's see, when would they have to have that in?
Like now, because I think the deadline was yesterday, so in order to um, let's see, one four weeks before the next hearing was uh last night.
All right, so there isn't time for them to get in for the June 8th meeting, is that correct?
Well, yeah, I mean, it's tight. You'd have to write the public hearing notice right away, and it would have to get out right away.
When, all right, so.
Let me, I don't have my
I'm just thinking, two weeks before is next, is it um?
Two weeks before, yeah, it's gonna be next Wednesday.
So it would have to be in the newspaper by Wednesday?
Yes, and the telegram, we found out, requires three days' notice.
Free business day, so that they would have to have it in the news, have to request it to go into the newspaper tomorrow. I think it's too tight. What what is the petition thing?
Um, what do you, Jim, do you want to just ask for a continuance to the July meeting and then we'll have everything?
I think realistically, that makes more sense.
Yeah, it's too rushed, and
Yeah.
you need to be able to talk about preparing the presentation to get to you, so it's advertised properly.
I think you're a wise lady, um, Ms. Adams.
Thank you.
Okay. So we're, we're going out to July. Now, herein lies the rub. As of right now, um, we're looking at having our ZBA meeting on the 13th. Is everybody available on July 13th? If we do it via Zoom?
I hope to be.
Yes, as far as I know.
Okay. I just don't want us to come up short. That's the last time, unless the legislature extends this Zoom, that we'll be able to do it by Zoom anyway. I think that expires on the 15th of July.
Leanne, what would be the deadline for the July 13th meeting?
Uh, so for July 13th. So the, the date of the hearing would be the 14th one. And the application would have to get in by June 15th.
The hearing, the 13th or the 14th?
13th.
13th.
Oh, sorry, 13th, yeah, 13th, yeah, sorry. Have the wrong calendar.
So they would have to have.
June 14th.
So the application would need to be in by June 15th. And then, within two weeks after that, notifications have to be in the paper and to the aboves.
Correct. Okay, we we can make that happen. And I really appreciate you um your forthcoming and helping us with this continuance.
Well, I appreciate your understanding. Um, I mean, I I know this is something that you'd like to do in layers. I just don't know how we could do it in layers. Okay, we're going to at the request of the petitioner, and they can tell me if I'm wrong, we can put this um continue this hearing until July 13th at 7:00 PM. Did someone care to make that motion?
Someone.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion made and seconded um at the request of the petitioner, that we continue the hearing until July 13th. Ms. Adams is gonna come in and sign paperwork. I'll take a roll call vote, Jim.
Hi.
Danny?
Hi.
Susanna?
Hi.
Uh, Jenny?
Hi.
And I'm an I. So we don't have to repost the um variance, but we do need a posting for you, when you file the application, I get a copy of the application, and I'll give you, as I did with this one, the um, what needs to be posted. And you'll ruin our July vacation. And yours probably too. Do you have any other questions?
You can zoom in from the, you can zoom in from the beach.
Yeah, we'll try. Um, do you, Ms. Adams, Mr. Yates, um have any other questions of us?
I do not, unless Jim or Kathy does.
I don't.
Mr. Almonte, did you have anything you?
No, I do not.
Do you think the timeframe is realistic?
It's much more realistic than June.
Okay. All right, uh, we have already continued the hearing. Um, we're all set, and we'll see you guys in July. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting if you wish.
Thank you, thank you, thank you very much.
Just to my uh colleagues, I'd like to say, I was just looking at this, and I'd like to get a handle around writing a decision upfront. And there was no way, I mean, I think you all saw what I meant, right?
Totally, yes.
And I think it'll be helpful to them in the long run anyway, because they'll, you know, have all their ducks in a row. Mr. Hanks, do you object to what we're doing?
Never.
Good answer.
I think her attitude was excellent, you know. I was appreciative of her understanding where we were.
Yeah, it's, again, it it comes down to, you know, um, what comes first, you know, the variance or or the whole design, and that's where they were struggling, is like, can we put parking in the front? And they said not by the bylaws, you need variance, and then there was, uh, you know, the question of setbacks of parking that are, is it a how how is that established? And I kind of worked with that with uh Timmy Wheeler, and he's like, yeah, it's kind of ambiguous. He says, I'm not really sure how that would be interpreted, so without those questions being answered, you you kind of put him in a bad spot as to how to finish his design for the whole project. You know, if you can't put str- uh parking in front of the building, then it really challenged them. There is some, uh, a lot of topography and some wetlands that he's trying to work around and stuff like that, but I I understand where you're where you're coming from too, so it's uh.
Yeah, because otherwise, I'd let you write the decision, Rich.
Oh, I was gonna say, um, Rich, how many parking spaces are they looking for?
Well, unfortunately for them, the size of their building uh triggers a lot of spaces, and I think it's a lot more than what they need for what they're doing. You know, uh, the vast majority of his is uh growing area and then his manufacturing, so we established that uh between
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No.
No? Anybody hear me?
We can hear you, but you're very faint.
Yes. Still, still faint.
Sorry. Does that make a difference?
No.
No. Well, I think we can hear you enough for an answer.
So what I'm saying is that, um, you know, what they're doing, I don't think they need as the bylaw requires. As it is the growing area, there's gonna be, what we consider that warehouse space, which has a less Uh, per square foot ratio for parking than the manufacturing area. Even, you know, so they, they end up with, I think a hundred spaces or something like that between everything.
I think it's even more than that, yeah.
And I can't envision that many employees, cause they're not doing sales out of there.
Right, right, wow, I'm surprised by that number.
You know, if they're, if they're trying to get a variance to reduce the parking. Have the building satisfy the parking requirements and then.
Yeah.
But go for the various, be open to front yard.
Well, I think I'm gonna give Suzanne her next, um, chore to do. And that's to take a look at this parking bylaw, because quite frankly, Rich. It's, um, absurd.
Yep, um, Madam Chair, if I may, don't we have another hearing going on here?
Not till 8:30.
Oh, okay. Alright.
So maybe you can take a look at it and see the meaning of it. I know one of the things, Rich, was they didn't want people parking at the edge of the property and backing onto a main street. They wanted them to have the cars to the side or at the rear.
When you say.
For the, the intent of the bylaw.
Wait, are you talking about they, the people that wrote the bylaw, or they, the owners that are building the property?
They, the people that wrote the bylaw.
Right.
We ran into this before down, you know where the Center for Autism is?
Yes, I do.
Um, well, they park in front of the building and that was one of the contentions when they came in. And what we did at that time is said. Access, uh, access and egress would have to be, uh, in back of the building. And then, you know, you can have your parking in front of the buildings, does that make sense? That's what happened.
Oh, they, that's Whitney Street, is that correct?
Yes.
One of the streets, it's on the corner there of the Rotary.
Yeah.
But you wouldn't want them accessing and egressing the property out onto the Rotary.
Exactly, right.
But yet, you know, in order to get the spaces in, they needed spaces in front of the building, so. This is why.
The backing into the street could be solved by putting a, uh, a, a berm there with, uh, planting in it, so they have to come in and go out to designated strips.
No, but some people would put parking spaces in the front of the building and then. I, I understand what you're saying about the berm, but again, here comes the site plan, do you know what I'm saying?
Exactly, yeah.
If, you, that's something that you can put on a site plan, but you can't put in, I mean. The variance has got to refer it to a plan.
Yeah.
So what, um, what category are they coming in under? Manufacturing, warehousing and storage, or all other non-residential establishments except agricultural?
I'll have to look in my funk and waggle here. Unless Rich can answer it off the top of his head.
I think it was the first one that you stated.
Uh, manufacturing?
Yes, manufactured warehousing.
No, they're two different ones, there's manufacturing and then the next one is warehousing and storage.
Well, they're, they're a mix, uh, they're, they're manufacturing on one section of the building and they. They want a grow room, which is considered warehousing.
Okay, yeah, see, that's one more reason, we need to know. Like, uh. At least a, a rough layout of the, of the building plan, so that we know what the.
I, I thought they provided you with, with, with the same conceptual plan they gave me, is that enough?
They did, but we can't refer to a conceptual plan that isn't approved, Rich, do you know what I mean?
Jerry, Jerry Skiles in, in the audience has his hand up.
Okay, would you promote him, please?
Hey, Rich, I think you can turn your volume back down a little now, cause we're hearing you fine.
Done.
Ah, that's much better.
Would you unmute yourself, Mr. Skiles?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, I just moved my hand up, I didn't know if I was connected or not, for the 8:30, uh, meeting. So, that's, that's all.
Okay, so, um. That'll, we can't start it until 8:30 though, we can't start it or we have to wait until when it was posted. But back to, when we're talking about that, if you look. Um, marijuana establishments and other. Um, licensed marijuana-related businesses, there's a separate section on page five. In the list of uses, okay? And, but, but, what we're under right now is the general parking. Bylaw. What is it, 821, is that what I remember it being?
810.
810?
Yep.
So what we're trying to do is to meet the needs of 810.
What is the latest bylaws that we have? I have 2018.
The latest bylaws we have.
I have.
2018, the best thing to do is to go online though, because. Every year, we don't necessarily update the bylaws. And if you get them online, as soon as the AG approves them, they put them out there and add them to the book.
Okay, only because I'm looking for the cannabis section and I'm not seeing it.
No, you, you, you don't have the latest greatest and the yellow book that Jim just held up is not the latest greatest.
Okay. You know, it's by comparison.
Eloise needs to print you all of the, uh, an official copy.
Yeah, because I know the, the state building code is, it specifically says you have to use the printed and not the online version.
Right.
Oh, I didn't know that, Susanna, what is this?
The Massachusetts Building Code, which is now the Uniform Building Code, you can get it online. But it tells you that it doesn't, you can use it and it may match what the printed version is. But if there's a difference, the online version. Is superseded by the printed version.
Well, fortunately, that's not true of our bylaw, right?
Well, theoretically, it is, you should have a, we should be working off a true and a tested copy from the town clerk.
Exactly.
Yes.
Because there could be an error in the, in transcribing it from written to web.
I have a, uh. An interesting question on that, as a matter of fact, now that I bring up the, the current bylaw. Um, that, um. References for marijuana establishments are all under, listed under the commercial uses table. And, uh, I was under the impression that the state had designated marijuana. Uh, regulation and establishments were all under industrial uses.
I had heard that also.
If you look, are you looking at the table on page five?
Yes.
And the table that I have on page five shows me that the marijuana facilities are only allowed an LB and LI.
That's true, but if you look at the top of that table on page five, it says, "Commercial Uses Continued." Marijuana, and if you look at the bottom.
There's also a separate heading for marijuana establishments and other licensed marijuana.
Lynn, Lynn, listen. And that's, that's, the marijuana uses are under commercial use. Now, if you scroll down to the bottom of page five, there's a section for industrial uses. That's where the marijuana stuff should be, I think.
Well, it can also be in a limited business.
It doesn't matter whether there's limited business in both industrial and commercial. It's the usage, not the, the district.
Okay, well, we'll send you to the planning board with that one to have them correct.
Okay. Okay.
Unless Susanna wants to volunteer.
No. I'll share with Jim, I'm happy to share with Jim.
This is Autumn Ridge you were waiting for, right, Leanne?
Yes, five more minutes.
Okay.
Actually, if, if, if someone wants to go to the planning board and just lay a suggestion, so. Um, Douglas on West Street there, if, if he was in a residential zoning district, his project would, would be a non-issue. Um, when I was in Townsend, they, they would have some footnotes that if you were building a residential structure and you happened to be in a commercial. Zoning district, your setbacks were different. So I don't know if that's, you know, is he the one and only isolated issue that, you know, he, he has to go by the. Commercial setbacks, which is 30, I think, rather than a 20 if he was, if he was a residential zone.
Oh, that's interesting, Rich, so you're saying. That the side yard would be different if he were in a residential agricultural zone?
Yeah, it's 20 feet.
But because he's in commercial, it's 30 feet?
Correct.
So is the, a butter? To his right? The, I, I believe that's Alvarez, is he also?
I think Douglas is the last one on that commercials district, I think the next one up is residential.
Okay, so that, so one of his, one of his neighbors is also commercial and the other is residential?
I believe so.
Huh.
Oh, thanks, Rich, because. If it is the inclination of the board to approve it, that's another good. Reason to, um. The difference in the setbacks for the two different. Um, uses.
Right.
Is helpful.
Right. I can understand if it was commercial, the commercial, you might want the 30 feet, but if, you know, if, if he's being a residential use. You know, why should he not be able to comply with the residential setbacks versus the commercial? But we'd have to have language for it, obviously.
That's another bylaw we have to write?
Planning Board?
Three more minutes.
I'm just wondering if the intent in the bylaw for the setbacks. If it makes, does it say for the, is it the district or is it the use that covers them?
I believe the table only shows the district. If we show a zoning district and then it has the setbacks corresponding to it.
Okay. We ought to have, uh, general meetings, Rich, with planning board and ZBA members and yourself. And clean some of this stuff up.
That's a good idea.
Actually, we were commended by, um, some folks that the ZBA and planning board play together well in the sandbox.
As long as the sand doesn't get too deep, right?
This is it, and as long as I can keep throwing stuff back to them, it's fine.
I think I would be very frustrated as a taxpayer in a town where the town boards kept suing each other and costing the town money.
Well, Rich has been a big help too, because he works with the folks. And kind of coordinates among the groups. I don't know how he does what he does within the timeframe that he has, but.
That's, that makes two of us.
And I don't know what we ever did before Leanne, because Leanne keeps me honest too.
Leanne is awesome. She's a rock star, right, Leanne?
Yep, brilliant. It's 8:30.
Excellent, okay, now the petitioner is here for Autumn Ridge.
Is here, would you like me to promote him?
Yes, please, is there anyone else he wants promoted at the same time?
Um, I just see him, Louise Jander and Mr. Skiles, who I believe is in a butter, not the petitioner.
Okay. So this is Patrick Ryan, is it?
Yes.
There's another Ryan in town, this is a first for a while now. Okay, would you like to, um. Let us know what has transpired and what's going on and what you're asking us for?
So I think, um, what happened is I, I was very confused when applying for permits. On how the address of 34 Autumn Ridge. Um, road was, uh. Labeled, I guess, I looked at it as one residence with two houses on it. Um, that's how I understood it, um, when I purchased the property. So what happened is I see that it's actually technically now, I guess, a. One property house with an in-law suite. So I think what got the messed up with me, applying for the permits is trying to finish, uh, like a basement area just to put a. Laundry room and down there for my in-laws. Um. It, it basically, I guess, is finishing square footage. I thought, even after reading the stuff, that it was adding on to the house. So there are two very big houses. One, one is, you know, 4,800 square foot finished. And one's like 3,600 square foot finished, the, the way they were built. You know, with, uh, actually, one of them actually being, if you look at the town thing, I think it's even bigger if you finish the attic. And all the rest of the basement, so it's two really big properties, I guess, on one piece of property. So when I applied for the permits, I applied for them at 34, so I guess I confused. The, uh, inspector on that aspect too, so I didn't know there was two addresses, I thought the two addresses were only for like. If fire or someone was called, I didn't realize there's actually two addresses that you can put in for the permit online. Meaning 34 and 32. So I guess I was completely confused overall, and what he's saying is, is I'd have to ask. For permission, if I can read this right, cause he sent me a thing, it says. When the properties were built, there was no, uh, bylaw on the in-law suite. But since then, you have, it requires a special permit. So basically, and it says, limited to the size of no more than 35%. Of the area of the primary residence. So I guess is what he's saying is technically. Finishing space is, is the same as adding on, I guess, I didn't think it was the same, I thought adding on to it, like say if I was building. Onto the house, or I was building another garage down the street, another accessory building or whatever, and putting more square footage. That would be adding on, but I guess even doing the basement would be adding on to the square footage, cause it's finishing more space. It's not gonna be any living space or anything like that, simply gonna be a laundry room. In an open rec area, so it's just basically finishing the walls.
Wow.
Everything else has already been built. So it's not, you know, nothing's being added per se, but it is being finished.
Well, let me, let's just backstep a minute here, first of all. 34 is the main house, is that correct?
That's correct.
And we, you know in Berlin that we do not allow. Uh, multiple family dwellings, correct?
No, I didn't know that. I had no idea.
In a residential agricultural district. In a residential agricultural district. We do, we do allow with special permits in-law apartments. And there are rules to being an in-law apartment. One is that it can only be thirty-five percent of the size of the main house. Now, when you're giving square footages of forty-eight hundred square feet and thirty-six hundred square feet, it sounds to me like you have two houses.
Oh, they're definitely two houses. There's definitely, the the houses, the second house, there there are two houses. I mean, that's how it's listed online as multi-houses. It's definitely two houses. I mean, to begin with, it was built that way. It's huge. The property, it, if you figure all the un-squared footage on the property, you probably have close to fifteen thousand. The main house is closer to seven thousand and the guest house is closer to three thousand. If you finish every single square foot within the house. So it's big properties. I mean, it's a big property. It's probably the biggest square footage, you know, in the in the town or close to when you put both together.
Well, part of the reason you're here is that unfinished unfinished spaces and unconditioned spaces don't count. So you know, you're talking about you have forty-eight hundred square feet and then you're you're saying it's seven thousand if you finish the attic. If the attic isn't finished, then it doesn't count.
Right, no. And I and I get that point now. Like I said, when I bought the house, I had no idea of all these things. The, you know, if there had been like a deed restriction or any, any kind of extra things I would have got from a realtor or even, you know, any kind of, you know, guideline or whatever, like say for the seven-bedroom septic, you know, that's a deed restriction. There's no more than seven bedrooms on the property. So when you get all those kinds of things, you can see those when you go up and you pull, you know, information on a property. So I had no idea. I, when I bought the property, I thought we were purchasing two houses. So I guess I was misled on that aspect. And of course, that's not your guys' fault. But again, I didn't build either one of these properties. I bought it as is. And they were both here. I didn't add on to the structures at all. These structures were here. And I did measure the two outsides of the structures. And it appears if you look at the land, like the value, the actual size of the land it's taking up, then you're you're below thirty-five percent. Because the main house takes up more land than the secondary house. They're both, the secondary house is two levels. The main house is three levels, plus the basement. The others two, plus the basement.
This Mr. Ryan, is there an existing in-law apartment for that house?
For the house? For what, for which house?
Or, no, 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 for the property. Is there an existing special permit for an in-law apartment?
He said that Rich, Mr. Mr. Hanks had said that yes, there was. It says there, let's see, to make sure. Your house originally built. Yeah, he's saying there is some sort of special permit that was already applied for.
That should be posted in the registry of deeds.
I I need, I need to interject here.
Okay, Mr. Hanks, please.
Okay, so Mr. Ryan has has interesting points that when he purchased a property, the in-law apartment existed. And to my knowledge, the requirement for a special permit did not take place until the year two thousand seventeen. Prior to that, it was, the the formula was still there. The thirty-five percent ratio was still in the bylaw. So in his file, Larry did all the calculations of the square footage of the exist of the of the main house. This was all built as one. It was built initially with the in-law. So it so it all came about at the same time. It wasn't that the in-law was added after the fact. It was all built as one from 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 new. And and in in the file, Larry did all the math to show that the existing in-law met the thirty-five percent ratio. He had all the math for both sides.
Yeah, because we granted them a a an in-law apartment for that house.
No, though, the the house was built prior to seventeen. So so I guess that's another prong, and I think he's also applying. So so when the bylaw came about in twenty seventeen, they gave everybody a five-year window that had an existing in-law apartment to come into compliance within five years of the of the enactment of the bylaw. So he's coming due May of this year. He's doing, he's, May or June of this year is when he has five-year window is up. And I don't know how he would know that other than this proceeding right now, because there was nothing on his deed exactly to his point.
I have an issue with saying that there are two separate houses on the property. Those buildings are connected.
They they are. It's connected and it it, they do show up as two addresses and to to Mr. Ryan's point, it was mostly because of nine-one-one purposes and for permitting wise that that it made. It it they clarified it better, but it it really is isn't by definition, because it is part of the main house.
Yeah, no, that part I understand entirely, because when when we were doing our house, they gave our barn a separate address.
Right.
And but you're not, I am not anywhere saying that I have two houses on the property. I just have two addresses.
Right, they're connected by a breezeway. A breezeway runs the two houses together. They have all their own separate utilities except for uh, the septic, which is on the deed that the property can have no more than seven bedrooms, which it it does have seven bedrooms.
Okay, going, I'm sorry, Danny, go ahead.
Back when they were building that house, there was quite a to-do about this separate bedroom. And they had to come up with a way to connect the two. That's where that breezeway comes into effect.
Because it has to be an attached accessory apartment, because it doesn't fall in the grandfather. It's not old enough to be a detached accessory apartment.
Correct. And there's another one just like it up on Ball Hill.
Yep.
Put a roof from one house to the next and call it a in-law apartment.
Okay, well, let's see what we can do to sort through this. I think all we can do for you, Mr. Ryan, would be to entertain what we have posted, and that is an in-law apartment. In order for us to do that, that secondary um, structure uh, that's used for an in-law apartment can only consist of thirty-five percent of the floor area of the main house. Now, is there a way to do that?
Well, that's the, that's the uh, the verbiage that I, you know, like I said, if you're talking about, you know, the the envelope at which the building takes up on the whole property, you know, first floor versus first floor, then yes, I think it's at the thirty-five percentile. If you go, you know, every single level of the home and every single square, you know, that could be finished or unfinished, then I think it's slightly over. So I think.
I I think what we care about is what's finished.
So that would be, like I said, that's the biggest confusing point, because when you buy a home and you have, you know, you're not adding on to the home. You know what I'm saying? You're you're going to be confused. If you had bought it and it said in the deed restriction and you purchase it and it says you cannot add on, you still would be confused. But if it said the verbiage, you cannot finish any square footage in this in-law suite on the deed restriction, then I wouldn't have purchased the property.
That's not the question we're asking you at the moment, though.
Okay, so what's the exact question?
So what is the finished square footage in the main house and the finished square footage in the in this in-law apartment?
That's the biggest confusion too, because I measure and you come up with different numbers than what you have online. So the online, I think, says forty-eight hundred and eleven or something for the main house. And the guest house, I think it says like thirty-eight hundred. So they're almost the same size. Well, they're less than a thousand square foot off of each other by what the what what the website says.
I think the best answer to that can come from Mr. Hanks. Um, what do you perceive?
If I recall, what was in the file when Larry calculated, I thought that the house was around fourteen, uh, forty-eight hundred square feet and the in-law apartment was around sixteen hundred ninety or something like that. And then they put it right above the thirty-five percent mark as both sides were finished at the time. So whether a lot more square footage was finished in the primary house or not to build that number up, I don't know.
So right now, the you're saying the main house is approximately forty-eight hundred square feet.
I'm just going off memory when I saw in the file.
I would say that's pretty close.
Yeah, that's the figure you gave us. And that the secondary, the in-law apartment is sixteen hundred ninety. Is that what I'm hearing from you, Rich?
That number seems to be recall of what I saw on the Larry's calculations.
And you, and I would, and I would say that that, I don't know if that's true or not. That's the one thing I don't, I don't know. Is exact square footage. I've never measured it. I've never done a complete calculation. I only read what the website said. The website says multi-houses on a piece of property. And I never even considered law in-laws or anything like that. I just thought of it as multi-houses on a property. So like I said, for me, I just think if there had been a deed restriction, we wouldn't even be in this conversation. If there was something written written in there for a purchase person purchasing something, it would at least let them know that this house is A, out of compliant or B, will never be compliant with new rules, then you probably, I would have steered clear of purchasing the property. You know what I'm saying? I mean, if it's square footage, it's already built and you can't finish it. I don't think anyone in their right mind would ever purchase something and say, okay, this is the building. It's been built. It's half-done or half, uh, you know, it's all the way built, but it's half-finished. I can never finish anything else. I don't think anyone would ever purchase something unless it was in the deed and then they decided that was something they wanted to do. So I just think with it not being in there, I think that made it very difficult for this whole situation to understand that the addresses, the two different addresses and all the laws that go with it. Unless, of course, you are familiar with zoning, familiar with building codes in the state of Massachusetts, which I'm not, and I'll be the first to admit that. I if I would have known, I would not have purchased it.
Where is this from?
Mr. Ryan, um, may I ask, what year did you purchase this property?
Um, let me, I have to look at that real quick. Give me one second. I can't remember the exact date. I want to say it's been two years, so twenty twenty or no, twenty nineteen. And like I said, at that time, we did a full deed, full look to make sure there was no restrictions. Because I have purchased properties before. Like I said, farms and things like that that have a lot of deed restrictions. So I'm very familiar with deed restrictions and building, you know, building restrictions. But to know, you know, that there, you know, where the in-law thing, I had no idea in two thousand and nineteen, nor do I have any real idea of how the exact thing works even today.
Do you understand what this board can give you and what they cannot give you?
I I don't even understand that, no.
Okay.
Other than, other than Mr. Richard, Mr. Hanks, I mean, did put down, you could ask if the board would allow you to finish the basement, but that would be up to the board and decide. Now, that's just what he wrote. I don't know if that's, like you said, special permit, so I guess it would be a special request.
Well, right, right now in the town of Berlin, you have to be zoned for multiple family dwelling. And where you are, you are not allowed to have a multiple family dwelling. Um, number two, what we have posted for is to give you an in-law apartment, number thirty-two. And the only way we can grant an in-law apartment is if the floor area in thirty-two is thirty-five percent or less of that that is in thirty-four.
No, wait, there's more, if you don't mind me saying. That if you look at section five twenty-four point three, the person living in this apartment, you're allowed to have up to four residents, at least one of whom is related by blood or marriage to at least one resident.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that that's step two.
But I don't think, right. If I may, that's not an in-law apartment. That regulation you're reading is for a a accessory apartment. Not, it's just for a detached accessory apartment.
Yep, we're on detached accessory.
So you need to go to the page before that and go to the in-law apartment.
Yeah.
No, I.
Before we even get there, I think we have to decide we are looking for an in-law apartment, okay? And in order for us to be able to act on this, it needs, the in-law apartment needs to be thirty-five percent or less um, than the square footage of the main house.
Now, where I'm looking at that law, where where is that exactly at where it says square footage? That's where I'm a little bit confused too. Maybe, can you email that to me? Or can I look that up?
It's section five twelve of the zoning ordinance.
All right, let me look that up real fast. I did not read that square footage thing. So let me pull that up real quick.
I I think you also need to have a verified square footage. I don't think it is appropriate to use an MLS listing for your square footage.
Actually, the MLS might overdo and you might be better off if you didn't use that.
And you said that was Berlin Mass zoning bylaws, section?
Section five twelve. If you go to the town of Berlin webpage, the town clerk section, there's a link to the bylaws for the town there.
It's article five, it's supplemental regulations. And then five-ten in-law apartment. And then the section you're looking for, as Jim says, is the maximum size. And that is thirty-five percent of the dwelling's total floor area.
So what what is the definition of floor area? That's, I think that's where I'm getting really confused.
That's up.
Was that the area which it matches on the property or is that, so if we, if you, like technically, you're talking about each level of a floor, like if it's free stories?
We want you to take all usable floor area in both houses and add them all together and make sure that thirty-two only constitutes thirty-five percent or less of that total.
Does that include garages?
Okay, Patrick? If you, if you go to the definitions section of the zoning ordinance, it says in the back on page one oh six, it says for floor area, it says the interior floor area of a dwelling unit exclusive of basements, stairwells, halls, bathrooms, corridors, attics, walls, partitions, and attached accessory buildings. So you're essentially taking the square, the finished square footage of the building and then subtracting any bathrooms or hallways. Bathrooms, hallways, stairwells, the wall, themselves, the partitions.
I think the best thing to do for you, Mr. Ryan, is to rely on Mr. Hanks, because he's the ultimate person to decide what the square footage is. And I think his concern is that you're finishing the basement in thirty-two. And by doing so, you are going to far exceed the thirty-five percent for the in-law apartment.
Okay, so let's just, okay, so let's just say, okay, we purchased the property now. Thought it was two houses. What if we just turn it back to one property?
It is one property.
Right, that's what I'm saying. But what if there's no thirty-two no more? What if there's just thirty-four?
You'd have to, you'd have to get rid of the kitchen.
You'd what?
You'd have to get rid of the kitchen of number thirty-two.
Oh, so you can't have two kitchens in one residence? Okay. I didn't see that one either.
The kitchen is what makes it a residence.
Okay. So basically, so basically, I did get a little bit jammed up here purchasing this property then. So basically, I, like I said, I guess that is the big problem. Without a deed restriction, I had no idea these these bylaws. I mean, it's, you purchased two properties. you purchase two properties this big, you pay one point two million dollars. You know what I'm saying? And you you think you're getting something. You're not, I guess. So I guess I'll have to look at it. I mean, I'll have to go and and look into some other things, I guess, because that's pretty it's pretty hardcore. You know, it's a big investment. Go ahead.
I said, apparently they weren't big enough because you're adding on to it.
Well, yeah, because I have family living here because I'm a disabled veteran and they take care of me. So, yeah, so I I do have some other issues. But I don't think that's relevant, really, you know, that I'm a hundred percent disabled veteran.
Right.
I mean, but it is is part of the problem.
What we would like to do for you is entertain an in-law apartment. And I guess we're looking for you to provide us guidance as to whether or not um you feel you can make accommodations uh, with the building commissioner that will show us that the in-law apartment is thirty-five percent or less of the total floor area of what we consider one structure.
My guess right now, ma'am, is it's probably somewhere between eighty percentile of the main home, maybe seventy-five percent. So it's already was built way out of spec. It's already way more square footage than than allowed. I don't even think it's close. So that's another problem. I just see problem after problem after problem. The two buildings were built way too big. It's the way it appears to me. Actually, the one could have been bigger, but the other one needed to be smaller. But I can't unbuild them and rebuild them in today's, you know, market and expect to fall within the compliance of that law. They were already built this big. There's really, I I don't see anything I can do. I have seven bedrooms here. You know, I went and got the seven bedroom deed, you know, restriction. Um, one of the houses has four bedrooms. One of them has three bedrooms. They're both big houses. So I really don't at this point see anything I can do to fall anywhere near compliance at this at all.
Well, see, this is why I'm getting confused because you keep saying they're both so big, but you want to make one of them even bigger. And that's.
The 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 uh, person that takes care of me wants to have a laundry room in their own place where they live in the basement. And they want to have a little rec area. So one of my caregivers just wants to have a space in the basement area, like a rec room slash laundry room. So it's not like she wants to, you know, house fifteen more people or something. We want to put bedrooms in there with windows and you know, everything else. It's just finishing the walls. I mean, the walls are mainly finished from the beginning, from the bill. Almost everything was finished, even the upstairs has electrical, everything ran. All you'd have to do is put drywall in the attic. I mean, they finished everything when you really think about it, other than the drywall.
Mr. Ryan, Mr. Ryan, I think everyone on the board has a great deal of sympathy for the predicament you find yourself. Unfortunately, the remedy for your um predicament is not in our hands. If you're if you're looking for an in-law apartment,
Well, I'm not, to be honest, no, I'm not. I'm not looking for anything other than what I purchased, which was two houses on a piece of property. So I'm not really looking for anything per se. Um, obviously, I didn't, obviously, the homework wasn't done. And I mean, I do, like I said, um, I mean, it's kind of crazy, but you know, I have like five or six lawyers in my family, three of which are real estate lawyers, and not one of them caught this, which is pretty sad. And and they did do a deed search. They did do a title search, you know, they did do some due diligence. So I mean, at the end of the day, it's kind of like the ball really, you know, I guess I dropped it on this one. Wow, had no idea.
We do understand your frustration and we do appreciate your frustration. But what this board has in front of it and the only thing it can um, take any action on is whether or not to grant you an in-law apartment. And um in order to do that, we have to know, and you've already told us that isn't the case.
Well, it's it's way past the in-law apartment. I I know that for a fact. We can we can measure all the square footage. It's way past that. These things were built way, way bigger specs than any in-law apartment. I'm sorry. That's why we purchased it because of my needs to have my caregivers come and go. It's just easier to have her right next door.
Um, and and while we appreciate that, unfortunately, I don't think other than dealing with the potential for an in-law apartment is anything that we can help you with.
Okay, well, there, I mean, I I guess at this point there is nothing we can do.
Mr. Hanks, you have no suggestions, do you?
Well, what I do and, you know, the only thing I relied on was what the building plans were that's in the file. And, you know, Mr. Ryan could be correct that when they built it, they they may not have built the plan. They could have built things bigger and different than what's in the file. Um, Patrick, if I'll throw this out, and I'll I'll help you measure all your areas if you want, and we can do the calculation. Um, I don't, you know, you you seem to not fully sure of what you truly have.
Yeah, but I do know it's it's bigger than thirty-five percent. I mean, that's, I mean, I, you know, I may not, you know.
Is that is that with or without finishing the basement?
It it's way over thirty-five percent without even finishing the basement. Well.
Okay, well, i- if I may, Mr. Ryan, before you talk yourself out of this and talk us out of this for you, if I may throw something in here, um, this was originally built and it was built with the understanding that it was going to have an in-law apartment attached to it.
Right.
That was prior to the existence of this bylaw that that set the thirty-five percent limit. So it would seem to me that we should, we as a board should be able to issue a special permit with the uh, understanding that the original building sizes would be grandfathered in and bypass that thirty-five percent limit. Um, that's what it was built at. That's what it was originally permitted as.
When this was built, the thirty-five percent was there. The thirty-five percent for an in-law apartment has been in the bylaw since Hector was a pup.
Two thousand, so it has been that long? It's been in there since two thousand and four when the house was built?
Oh, I bet you it's more than ten years ago.
It's older than that.
So how the heck did they get this built then? That's my, that's my biggest question. Like, I just don't understand this at all. I mean.
The 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 calculations were were done by the building official at the time. That's what I'm saying. If they booked the plan and met the requirement at the time without any additional space being finished off. So what what was supposedly built not the thirty-five percent requirement?
Yeah, the only way I come up with thirty-five is by measuring the 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 actual space at which the two properties take up. You know, that's the only way I can come up with that math.
If you'll, if we can get Mr. Hanks to pull that those numbers and compare those to the actual what's in the current houses right now, perhaps we can figure out if we're actually at thirty-five percent. And um, go from there.
Okay, I mean, that's the only thing I can see. I just know, like you said, I'm 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 a hundred percent positive. Where I think right now, the last time the guy, the praiser came out, I think he did his measurements. I think he came up with forty-eight eleven on the main house and thirty-eight eighty on the second house.
But you have to understand, he's using entirely different requirements for measuring square footage. When when a freezer comes out, he's going to measure the bathrooms. He's going to measure the hallways.
Yeah.
Well, I agree, I agree with you, Jim, but I don't want to mislead Mr. Ryan. I think when you're talking forty-eight hundred versus thirty-eight hundred, it would be well for the building inspector to take a look. But I, you know, I don't want to mislead him to think that there's some way of coming up with.
Well, I don't want to mislead him either, but what's the alternative here is, I mean, are we going to say we're not going to issue a special permit and that he has to have his in-laws move out?
No, the only thing he could do would be either to reduce the size of thirty-two or increase the size of thirty-four or remove the kitchen from thirty-two.
I still, like I said, even if I finish the attic, let's just say, I think that's like sixteen hundred more square foot. That would put me at fifty-six, seven hundred. I still think the guest house is at three, at least three thousand. You're still way over. So I don't think, I I mean, I I I'm being honest here. I just these houses are big. That's why I purchased it for this price. I would have never paid this price if it wasn't this big because it fit my family's needs. And if there would have been a deed restriction in, I would not have went through with this deal. I mean, it would have been obvious and evident. I counted it up, seven bedrooms, seven deed restrictions, seven bedroom deeds, three bedrooms in one, four bedrooms in the other. It fits all my needs. That's why I purchased it. You know, so that's what's really bad here is it's it's got me in a serious bind in that aspect. I guess I could put it up for sale and sell it, but this time I would have to be honest that they're going to have to downsize the second home, which is a big, you know, big investment. So I mean, it's a big hit to somebody. I don't know how you can really take square footage away from a building. It's kind of it's very difficult to do. Um, but I guess, you know, it's something that they would have to figure out.
Oh, I think that what Jim said, if you want to um, go and get actual figures uh, with the um, building commissioner, um, and again, you kind of know in the back of your mind what they're going to come back like. Uh, the only we do not have the authority to do anything for you except give you an in-law apartment.
Okay, so when that's the special permit is the in-law apartment?
That's the special permit that um was applied for and what we're considering. If you want to work with Mr. Hanks and just verify the square footage, um, the only other suggestion I would have for you is if things are at the point that you say they are, and that would be to remove the kitchen and make it all unhappy home.
Yeah, I mean, I'd have to enclose the breezeway. I think they did pour a foundation under the breezeway, to be honest. But I'd have to enclose the breezeway then. I mean, really, technically, you wouldn't want to.
Mr. Hanks, would you be willing to um meet with Mr. Ryan and um better define where we are?
Oh, absolutely. If if he's receptive to it, I have no problem. We can measure things out. I can give him.
We can definitely measure it out. I mean, it just seems like it's it's way over. Like I said, it's.
I I think you're probably right. But would you like to have us continue this hearing until next month? When you've had a chance to discuss the situation with Mr. Hanks?
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, it's our only option at this point right now, so we might as well try it out.
Uh, how does the board feel?
I think that sounds like a great idea.
Okay. So um, at the request, I'm assuming of Mr. Ryan, unless he tells me otherwise, I'd entertain a motion um, to um, continue this hearing. And when's the next time we have available?
Um, I think we have three hearings, so seven, seven thirty, eight, so eight thirty, I believe, on.
The eight. Okay. So um, if someone would like to make um, a motion that um, we continue at the request of the petitioner the hearing until June eighth at eight thirty P M to allow for um, dimensional um, dimensions of, yeah, dwelling dimensions to be verified with um, the building commissioner.
Don't move.
Is there a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you. I'll take a roll call vote. Jim?
Hi.
Danny?
Hi.
Susanna?
Hi.
Jenny?
Hi.
And I'm an I. So we'll see you next month, Mr. Ryan, and it's nice to have another Ryan in town.
Thank you.
So Patrick, reach out to me next week and we'll set up a time that works for both of us and I'll come over and uh, we'll we'll go over it and I'll try and give you some ideas of.
Okay.
We'll first measure and see where we're at. And then I can try and give you some suggestions. So so we'll work with you best we can.
All right.
Mr. Ryan, is is it a problem? Maybe I could ask Mr. Hanks. Um, there's forms that need to be signed. When you go see Mr. Ryan, can you take forms from Leanne and have him sign them, please?
I could do that.
To extend the hearing, is that okay with you, Leanne?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Now, just so you know, there is someone in the audience with their hand raised.
Okay, who is it? Do we know?
Yes, it's Mr. Skiles.
Mr. Skiles, um, could you promote him, please?
Okay.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Uh, yes, first of all, it's the buyer beware. Uh, we are the original, we are one of the few original owners up here in Autumn Bridge. And uh, you know, the the neighbors can't be responsible for what a person does not know. Okay, this is why we have lawyers. And my my wife and I are original owners and we as the houses were being built, uh, we went through almost every single house here in Autumn Bridge as they're being built, including thirty-two and thirty-four. It was mentioned that approximately sixteen hundred feet before the thirty-two guest house. That's can't be true. It's much larger than that. It had at least two bedrooms. And what Mr. Ryan wants to add a laundry room to the basement. As I recall, it already has a laundry room. Why do we need a second one? Uh, why do he wants to increase the basement? He mentioned a wine room. Uh, this is increasing the living space, no matter what anybody says. As I recall, there were two bed, two bedrooms in the up, the stoop floors. Two bedrooms, I believe. Uh, the rumor is that the house has been increased to four bedrooms. I don't know if that's true, but that's what I've been told. And there's excessive parking over there as it is now, coming and going over the last two years. Next to the guest house, they they'll pick a guest or parrot house. They will put in a concrete slab for more parking. Uh, this was done this year. So I have, there's trucks all coming and going. Uh, the guest house, uh, the zoning at the time was approximately, uh, the houses had to be on approximately two acres. Uh, we have one point eight acres. Uh, the guest house is about twenty feet from our from our property line, where the next door neighbors. Uh, we put up trees to so that we wouldn't have to see the guest house. The rumor was that I heard that that they wanted to cut them down. Okay, that felt back to them. I told them we had our property surveyed, so that kind of went away. Um, but uh, uh, and you know, a rec room. I I the previous, the the house, our house and thirty-two and thirty-four was built by Mark Rose, which you probably all know. Uh, and uh, uh, at that time, the house was built in two thousand and three. That's when we purchased our house, two thousand and three. And our house is approximately forty-four hundred square feet on two acres. Uh, this guest house is within about twenty feet of our property line, maybe less. And uh, you know, the cars that have been coming and going, a lot of construction, the first, the first year that the resident moved in, there was a lot of construction going on. I I don't know what was going on, but there was a lot of construction. Uh, uh, and you know, we're basically against this. It changes the whole uh, the neighborhood. And uh, 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 being one of the original owner, one of the few remaining original owners in Autumn Bridge, we have the original bylaws given to us by Mark Rose. We have that. Uh, so, and we were told that it was a a pair, a guest house for elderly in-laws. Uh, so, and we were, uh, told that it was a, a au pair, a guest house for, uh, elderly in-laws. The prior owner, uh, did have it as a in-law, two people. A, a, an elderly man, uh, uh, that I used to talk to, a very nice guy who passed away. Uh, but there were two people living in the in-law, two, not three, not four, and not five. I don't know how many people, there's just a lot of coming and going. I don't know what's going on there. And I can't speculate. And, uh, you know, so we're, we're basically not, not for it. It, it's, you know, to put that, as Mr. Ryan said, these, these, the main house is huge and the guest house is, is probably at least thirty-six hundred feet square feet, like you said. And if he keeps, he kept repeating how big they're huge, they're big. If they're big and huge, why do, see, why do we need more space? Okay, and we, uh, my wife and I worry about that this is being developed into a, a separate, single-family home. And, you know, to have more than two bedrooms, finish the basement, and I have a wine cellar and a recreational room. I, I don't, I'm sorry, I, I just don't get it.
Well, Mr. Skiles, I think, um, we'd like to give everyone an opportunity to express their opinion. Um, the hearing has been continued. But I will tell you that the building commissioner and Mr. Ryan are going to try to see exactly what the situation is. And this board can only authorize an in-law apartment to make it two um, separate units, if you will. If it's within the guidelines of the bylaw and it doesn't appear at this time that it is, so I don't know what the solution is going to be.
No.
But that's the framework in which we have to operate.
Now, uh, should not the deed of the property include the blueprints of the house, both the, uh, guest house and the, and the, uh, the, the main house, the main house, that be included in the, the, the dimensions and square footage? And everything should be in the deed. I don't understand what this good problem is.
No, it won't be in the deed. It, anything, it would have to be on file in the building department when they filed for a building permit, and that would be the only place it would be.
Well, they can, if they get a special permit, they can file that.
But they didn't have a special permit back then.
And, uh, that, uh, another question, and it probably is true, are there two separate tents on the property or one?
Well, I think that's a question that we could ask the petitioner at the hearing um, when we get together in June. Personally, I don't know if you wanted an answer to that beyond going to Mr. Ryan. It would be the Board of Health.
Hi, this is Nina, you know, um, Jerry's wife, and I did want to say one thing that I kept hearing that was a little bit disturbing. Mr. Ryan kept referring to them as two separate properties. And they're not. And I think that needs to be made clear because we are concerned about that, um, as Jerry said, we were the original owners. We were very closely working with Mark Rhodes when we built our house. And we were assured when that structure went up that this would only be used as either an au pair suite or, uh, in-law suite. And it was, and it was not going to be a separate building, another little house sandwiched between two very, two larger houses, let's say. So, um, and we were told that the, the people who were buying the, the property at the time, and so there, there's only two owners, if Mr. Ryan, the previous owner, that, that they were, um, they needed additional space to house their vehicles so that it was sort of, it was sort of kind of like a carriage house almost, but that, that was kind of the idea. Um, so, so we are, um, you know, a little concerned about that, that if there's an intention to subdivide, because I know there's, there are land restrictions, I think, as well, with respect to how much land each property needs to have around it. And so.
We appreciate your frustration and I understand, you know, your concerns. My suggestion to you would be to go out and read Article Five, Section Five, Ten, and the subsections. It tells you specifically what can and cannot happen in an in-law apartment. The bylaw is online. I think it's, what is it? Um, Leanne, Town of Berlin slash, um.
The website?
Yeah.
Townofberlin.com.
I understand that and I understand and I appreciate all of the, the discussion that, that we heard um, regarding the percentage and of, of, of space and all of that. I'm, I'm fine with all of that. I just don't want it to be a precedent for something else. And what did disturb me was hearing Mr. Ryan being, you know, stating that he was led to believe that these were two separate houses. And so that's not what it is. So that has to be clearly understood.
And I have, I have, I have to say, I, I did read both sections, five twelve and five ten. And they're pretty clear to me. Uh, I, I'm not sure that my wife read the whole thing, but I have, I have read it, so, yeah.
And it limits the number of people that can live there and the type of people, the relationship there has to be, et cetera.
I, I want to add one question. It, it, as I recall, it's three, three per, three people. Is that true?
Yes.
And so the question is, how many?
It's because occupancy of the in-law apartment is limited to no more than three persons, at least one of whom is a, is related by blood or marriage uh, to the resident owner of the premises.
And so the question is, is that currently true with Mr. Ryan? Are there two people living in there or there's three, four, or five?
Mr. Skiles, we first need to determine at the next meeting whether or not we can entertain the permit for the in-law apartment. And, um, that's going to be a exercise that our building commissioner and Mr. Ryan are going to address between now and our next meeting. If in fact, um, it's not within the thirty-five percent, then I think we have to stop there and we can't issue an in-law apartment.
Thank you.
After the thirty-five percent issue is resolved, then we can get into what can and cannot transpire there. Are you in agreement with that, Jim?
Yep. Yep.
Anybody else on the board have, um, a thought on the matter?
That we want to share?
Well, at, at this point, you, you vote to continue, so I don't know how much more you want to discuss right now.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't think we can do much more this evening.
Did we vote to adjourn?
Well, we vote, we voted to continue the hearing already, did we not, Leanne?
We did, yes, you did.
Okay, so really, we're talking outside of the hearing, which we probably shouldn't be doing, but I did want to uh, allow Mr. Skiles or Mr. and Mrs. Skiles to, um, voice their opinion. Okay, folks, I, I suspect we will see you next month.
Very far.
It'll be eight thirty.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have anything?
I just waved to my own cursor.
My.
Way back.
Mike, yeah, I was just going to ask the same thing to the way back.
So, um, where, where do we stand now? We have, um.
Oh, would you like to adjourn the meeting?
Yes.
Do we have any other business?
Yeah.
Do we have any other business, Leanne?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, I've entertained a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
Roll call vote. Jim?
Aye.
Jenny?
Aye.
Susanna?
Aye.
And Ginny?
Aye.